Test one-two. Test one-two. Test one-two. Test one-two. Test, test.
Welcome everyone to the council meeting for December 10th. Could you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Councilmember Musgrove, would you like to lead us today?
Love to, Mayor, thank you. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. God, we ask your blessings on those who have been called to lead the community in which we live, play, and work. Guide us peacefully through debate. Remind us that we are not only leaders but also servants, and that it is our responsibility to serve the common good of all. Grant us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is good, right, and true. May we always speak when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and of course, by the spirit of love. Amen.
Okay, Mr. Scallik, could we please have the roll call?
Councilmember Musgrove?
Here.
Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Councilmember Sinella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. Okay, moving on, first order of business is new business. Do we have any... We have a couple of speakers on item number two, so do we have any questions about the minutes or any comments, or do we have an approval of that?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to item number two. We have one speaker, Brad Pearson, and then we also have a comment that I will be... Oops, we have a couple, sorry. A couple of speakers. I actually will go ahead and read Brad Pearson. You'll be first, followed by Georgina Najera, followed by Natalie Martinez. But first up, I will be reading some comments by Arcela Nunez Alvarez. "On behalf of Universidad Popular and countless community members who dedicated many hours to reaching our family, friends, and neighbors with educational information regarding Measure Q, we thank Deputy Mayor Sharon Jenkins for her dedication and leadership bringing our community together for a shared vision of a safe and strong city. I was part of a group of dozens of volunteer community leaders who had the honor of visiting over 2,000 Spanish-speaking residents and helped many community members to understand the voting process and the benefits Measure Q will bring to all of our city, but especially the areas that are historically disinvested. This was a truly remarkable case of nonpartisanship and action that centers people and civic participation at a time when polarization prevails. It was truly inspiring to collaborate with civic-minded residents who dedicated many evenings and weekends to walking with neighbors and talking to them. Congratulations to everyone involved in this important historic initiative. We look forward to seeing the positive impacts of continued investments to serve all residents and paying special attention to the areas most in need and of opportunity." Thank you, Arcela Nunez, co-director of Universidad Popular. So the first speaker is Brad Pearson, followed by Georgina Najera, and then Natalie Martinez. Welcome.
All right, good evening, Mayor Jones, city council members, and city staff. My name is Brad Pearson, and I'm a member of the San Marcos Professional Firefighters Association. Tonight, I wanted to take a moment to thank all of you for your leadership and for your courage. Back in July, you voted with 5-0 support to place a local sales tax measure on the November ballot. During that time, our city was faced with a budget deficit along with future financial challenges. Many options were explored by our city staff, and a local sales tax measure emerged as the best option for our financial needs. By placing the measure on the ballot, you allowed the residents of our community to make the final decision, which would ultimately determine the future of our city. As we're all aware, Measure Q passed with 60.44% support from our voters. Measure Q was a huge success, and it was you who allowed the voice of our voters to be heard at the ballot. I also believe the success of Measure Q is a testament to the trust our community has in your leadership. Our residents know you will be fiscally responsible with the additional revenue and continue to prioritize public safety, infrastructure, and vital city services to keep San Marcos safe and strong for years to come. On behalf of the San Marcos Firefighters Association, I would like to say thank you. We thank you for your leadership, we thank you for your courage, and we thank you for your continued dedication to our community. I would also like to take a moment to recognize our city manager, Michelle Bender, and our city staff, who spent countless hours working to balance the budget and find financial solutions to our... and find solutions to our financial challenges. The success of Measure Q would not have been possible without all your hard work, dedication, and support. Finally, I would like to take my last few moments to recognize council member Sharon Jenkins, as this will be her last meeting tonight. Trying to make... Try not to make you cry. Sharon has been a resident with San Marcos since 1971, and she has dedicated many of those years serving our community. I don't have enough time to list all of her accomplishments, because she has many, but I'd like to highlight a few. Sharon was elected on the governing board of the school district in 1998 and remained on the board until 2012, when she was elected to city council. Sharon has dedicated countless hours to our community and provided us with exceptional leadership. One of Sharon's more recent accomplishments was her involvement with the Committee for a Safe and Strong San Marcos. Sharon spent countless hours knocking on doors and talking to residents, educating them on Measure Q. Sharon also guided the committee and many community volunteers with her vision, her work ethic, and her leadership. There is no question Sharon was the quarterback of the committee, and her contributions made a significant impact, and for your support, we thank you. Sharon is a true definition of a public servant and community leader. She has always put San Marcos first, and she's always led with integrity and loyalty. Her accomplishments and dedication to our community will never be forgotten, and there's no question you will leave a legacy behind you. Sharon, we look forward to seeing you in this next chapter of your life. We know you'll be busy spending time with family and friends and your grandchildren, and on behalf of the San Marcos Firefighters, I want to say thank you for your leadership, thank you for your service, and thank you for your friendship.
Okay, up next is Georgina Najera, followed by Natalie Martinez. Welcome.
Buenas tardes a todo el consejo.
Good afternoon to all the council.
Yo soy Georgina Najera y soy voluntario de Universidad Popular.
My name is Georgina Najera, and I am a volunteer for Universidad Popular.
He vivido en San Marcos desde hace más de treinta años.
I have lived in San Marcos over thirty years.
Yo fui una de los voluntarios que se involucró...
I was one of the volunteers that was involved...
...en promover e informar...
In promoting and informing...
...a mi comunidad sobre la... ...la amenda Q.
In my community with the amendment Q.
Yo me involucré porque en un principio...
I wasn't... I got involved because at the beginning...
Yo tenía mis dudas de qué se trataba.
I had my doubts, not knowing what it was about.
La medida Q.
The measurement Q, or Q measurement.
Pero a medida de que me fui informando más...
But as I got more information...
...de lo que se trataba...
Of what it was about.
Y cómo iba a beneficiar...
And what the benefits would be...
...a los residentes...
For the residents.
...de la ciudad de San Marcos.
Of the city of San Marcos.
Mejorar los servicios públicos.
Improving the services or public services improvement.
Y ahí me sentí con la necesidad...
And that's where I felt the need...
...de llevar la información...
That I would take the information...
...a mi comunidad.
To my community.
Mi experiencia fue...
My experience was...
...que sí tuve respuesta...
That I did have an answer.
...de mi comunidad.
From my community.
Estaban interesados...
They were interested.
...de recibir más información para disipar sus dudas.
To receive more information in order to get rid of their doubts.
Mi comunidad estaban sorprendidos...
They... My community was surprised.
...que les lleváramos la información hasta la puerta de su casa.
That we would take the information all the way to their front door.
Porque usualmente...
Because normally...
...es difícil que la información de la ciudad...
It's quite difficult for the information from the city...
...llegue a las puertas...
To arrive to everyone's door.
...y en su propio idioma.
And in their own language.
Espero que con esta medida...
I hope that with this measure...
...veamos que los fondos...
We see that the funding...
...sean distribuidos y usados equitativamente.
Are distributed and used with equity.
Entre todos los residentes de la ciudad de San Marcos.
Amongst all the residents of the city of San Marcos.
Que todos tengan acceso...
That everybody has access...
...a estos fondos.
To this funding.
En lo necesario.
In every need.
Gracias a Sharon Jenkins.
Thank you to Sharon Jenkins.
Consejal del Distrito 3.
Of District 3.
Por su esfuerzo.
For your effort.
Para organizar...
To organize.
...a todos los voluntarios.
All the volunteers.
Y la colaboración con los bomberos.
And the collaboration with the firefighters.
Y la participación y ayuda de la ciudad.
And the participation and the help of the city.
Gracias a Phil y a Michelle.
Thank you to Phil, Michelle.
Por su participación.
For your participation.
Para que esto se hiciera realidad.
So that this can become a reality.
Gracias a todos, gracias...
Thank you.
...a la concejal, María Núñez.
Ms. María Núñez.
Del Distrito 1.
From District 1.
Es concejal. Gracias por...
Council member. She's a council member.
Por colaborar...
Thank you for collaborating.
...en esta medida Q.
In this measure Q, or Q measurement.
Gracias a todos.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up is Natalie Martinez. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Natalie Martinez, and I am a part of Universidad Popular. I want to take a moment to commend the work that went into the Measure Q outreach. I was a volunteer myself, and it was very meaningful to be able to have conversations with residents who would otherwise be unaware that this measure was on the ballot and the impact that it would have on the city. I would also like to take a moment to thank Deputy Mayor Jenkins, Councilmember María Núñez, the city staff, and the San Marcos Fire Department, and all of our volunteers from the community who worked to talk to residents and inform them about this measure. They took time out of their days to have these conversations with folks, and even offered an informational session to our Spanish speakers so that the residents could ask them questions about the measure directly. I'm also looking forward to seeing the access to resources that this measure will bring to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Okay. I will make a motion to adopt the Resolution 2024-9391 declaring the results of the consolidated general municipal election held on November 5th, 2024, in the city of San Marcos, and ordinance 2024-1554, Measure Q, as approved by the voters of San Marcos.
I have a couple of comments.
Yes.
If I could.
Sure.
Or do you want to wait?
And I do too.
All second, so we can have comments.
All right, go right ahead.
Okay. I'll make it short. So, one day earlier this month... It's okay, we have tissue. We're ready. I flipped my daily calendar, and it said... Sorry. You have to be a good individual first before you can be a good team player. I believe that we have many such people here today. Speaking as a volunteer for Measure Q, I think I speak for those of us on the committee when I share that it was a monumental undertaking. We are so appreciative of all the efforts of so many volunteers. Thank you to each of you who stepped up to play a critical role when you were called upon. And I have an interesting tidbit to share, that... We have about 230 employees in the city, and my guess is over half of them volunteered on their own time in some capacity. And lastly, and most importantly, we want to make a special thank you to the 60.44% of the residents who supported the measure. Thank you.
Councilmember Nunez?
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to take the opportunity to make some comments, and I won't reiterate what's been said. I think Brad Pearson did a wonderful job sort of summarizing where we've been with Measure Q, but I do want to take the opportunity to specifically thank the residents for really stepping up and making it very clear that we are all vested in our community, and we all want to see our community continue to improve, and so that's been really clear. So it... The message has been heard. And I also want to take the opportunity to give a special thank you to our deputy mayor for her leadership, to Michelle Bender for her leadership, and Chris Freeman from the leadership. That really powerful combination coming together really afforded all of us to come together, and it's been really special to see that. I personally was also involved with the on-the-ground work that was done, and it really has been an honor to work with all these individuals that selfishly gave of themselves, their time, their money, their effort, and it's really been just humbling to see the investment that we have in the city and how much people care and how willing they are to literally drop what they're doing for the collective good. And so it's been very special to be a part of that, and I want to thank all the city staff that took the time. It really shows how important our community is to all of us, and I just think it's really encouraging to see that this is the type of community that we have. And we don't see this everywhere, but we do have it here, and it's very special, and I hope that that work continues. So thank you for all the work that's been done, and I'm very... Really just encouraged to be here. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Sinella?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, again, I agree with everything that our speakers have said and my colleagues have said already, so I won't repeat them all, but I was so proud of our community, the broad coalition that came together to pass this, and I just want to thank everybody involved, from staff to my colleagues, to our different associations that spoke tonight, and just say especially thank you to the residents. Over 60% of you came together and voted in favor of Measure Q, and I'm very deeply appreciative for that, and just want to say thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Musgrove?
Thank you, Mayor. So the discussions regarding shortfall in our budget go back several years, and first I want to commend our city manager for a very frank and open discussion she had with all of us to specifically detail where we were, what we had done to Band-Aid some of the shortages, and what needed to happen, and the discussions that I know I personally had with our firefighters on ways we could make something come out of this that would work for everybody, and that collaborative effort to put it on the ballot, and then all the heavy lifting that they did, getting community support. I think everybody in the community got behind it, and it really came down to the education piece. Some of our sister cities had similar type measures that were not successful, and when I was asked recently by a member of the media, "Why were you successful and others not?" I can't speak to other cities, but I can only say that this city got together, put out a good message, and did not engage in a scare campaign, just simply laid out the facts, and the city got together, and they rallied behind it, and they said, "Yes, we can do this because we love the way the city's run, we love the services that are available, and the impact is minimal, and the benefit is great." So my hands off to everyone involved, our firefighters, our staff, members of the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council member. So during this whole campaign of Measure Q, I had many people ask why. Why is this necessary? What is going on in the city? And so one thing that we've always known, out of all of the cities in the county, we received the smallest amount of tax increment out of every single city. So where we get 7.2% out of every property tax dollar, cities like the city of Coronado get 31%. So if you just base that on a $1 million house, not that there are too many houses for $1 million in Coronado, they receive $3,100 for the basic services in that, for that one home. We receive $720 for that same home. So when you look at all of that, people understood the why, and I think, and I've said this very often, we're actually the little city that could, because having one of the lowest crime rates in the county, having such a high quality of life with such small resources is really the big story here. So when you think about all of that, I actually had some members of the media ask me as well, "Why is it that you think that the San Marcos tax measure passed and many of the other cities didn't?" And I said, "Well, I think there are really two reasons why that is." One being that we have the San Marcos Way. The San Marcos Way is that we do a lot for a little when it comes to financial resources. The San Marcos Way is how we have always been, and we will continue, and I want to make sure that all of our residents understand that. The San Marcos Way is that we offer excellent customer service by providing great services to you, a lot of different quality programs in our parks and rec and all of that, and beautiful parks. They don't call us San Parkos for nothing. But the other part is, you know, many councils before us have been trustworthy, and each one of us has really carried that banner as well, and I think when you have trust of the public, because you are trustworthy, I think that's why the community is willing to vote for a sales tax that maybe they wouldn't normally do or vote for. So I want to thank each citizen in our city. We will not change our way of spending. We will definitely be making sure that we are providing all the quality services that we have in the past. With the... We do a best value analysis, something that our city manager, Michelle Bender, brought on when we appointed her as our city manager, which was one of the greatest things that I think we've done to move this city forward, and the best quality analysis is always going to be making sure that we're spending your money wisely. So anyway, thank you very much. Really appreciate everything that everyone did, and we can now vote. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any notes? Seeing none, we accept the results. Okay. Moving on to our oral communications, we have... We have John Mosher. Welcome, John.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Michelle, hell on the pill. Sharon. I know, I already had him sitting there before he even came down here. I've gotten so used to seeing you here, and you've been our district council member ever since I've been involved in this from like 2017 on. I've gotten used to seeing you, working with you. All of us seniors look up to you. When I look at your questions and what you do at our meetings, you taught me more about what to look for and what to look at. I get the same from all of you, but... And then at the North County Transit District meetings, how you handle yourself down there. I'm proud to be from San Marcos. I was proud to have you be my council member. Anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. Okay. Any other commentary?
Not a mayor. Not a mayor. I have one public comment that came in via email. Would you like to read it, or should I?
Oh, yes. Can you go ahead? Sorry, I don't have my iPad available today.
"If a book is written about the history and development of San Marcos, there are many people in the room tonight who would find their name mentioned in that book. Some might be referenced in passing, some might warrant a paragraph, and a few would get their own chapter. But Sharon Jenkins deserves her own book. It is not an exaggeration to say that there is not a single elected person in the history of San Marcos who has had a greater impact on the shape and character of the city of San Marcos than Sharon Jenkins. As a school board member for 14 years, Sharon was a leader when the student population of San Marcos was exploding. She was involved in the construction of nine new schools. She helped transform SMUSD from a small, basically rural district to one that continually ranks as top unified school district in the county, and with some of the highest graduation rates and lowest dropout rates. When it was time to rebuild San Marcos High and modernize several other campuses, it was Sharon who helped lead the Prop K School Bond Campaign to raise the funds needed for those projects, and Sharon oversaw much of that construction. Sharon was also a founder of the San Marcos Promise, a nonprofit that continues to offer its services to our high school students as Project Next through its campus future centers, and Sharon continues to serve on the Project Next Board. When Sharon graduated to the San Marcos City Council, she spent the last 12 years with her council colleagues helping shape our great city, all while representing San Marcos on various regional boards, and most recently being the leader of the campaign to pass Measure Q in November." Measure Q in November. As someone who was fortunate enough to serve with Sharon for eight of her 26 years of elected service to our city, I can say with some credibility that your city and your school district would not be what they are today without Sharon's leadership. That is a simple truth. But what makes Sharon special is that she was always willing to do the hard and sometimes unpopular work to keep the school district and the city moving forward, without concern how that might impact her personality personally or politically. Her personal efforts to pass Prop K in 2010 and Measure Q this year are just two examples of this. Tax measures are neither popular nor fun, but usually vital and necessary. Sharon's willingness to roll up her sleeves and do the difficult and often thankless work to make sure that our community has the funding needed to provide the services our residents have come to expect is Hallmark Sharon Jenkins. She cares about our community and always puts the people first. In truth, Sharon is simply a good person with good values and a steady moral compass. She embodies all the virtues we want in a public servant and has served for a very long time with absolute honor. So Sharon, as a San Marcos resident for 25 years, a parent who has raised his kids here, and a local business owner, I know I speak for many when I say thank you for all you have done. You have the gratitude of an entire city. Our best to you always. With love, Randy Walton.
We do have one more public speaker, and that's going to be Natalie Martinez. Welcome, Natalie, again.
Thank you again. So I am here on behalf of Universidad Popular. I just want to let everyone know that this year marks our fourth annual Community Posada. Each year on Autumn Drive, we partner with Restoration Abbey's Church to host this beloved event, which welcomes neighbors and community members alike. The 2024 Community Posada will take place on Friday, December 20th, from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. As always, this celebration is a meaningful way to close out the year with delicious food, festive music, memorable photos, and more. We'd also like to express our gratitude to Councilmember Nunez for her presence and support at the last three Community Posadas. We hope to see you with us again this year. A special thank you goes to Restoration Abbey's Church, the little church on the corner that continues to make a profound impact in our community. We are deeply thankful for their ongoing partnership and commitment to this cherished tradition. And another note, Cal State San Marcos has identified April 11th, 2025, as the Day of Service in honor of Cesar Chavez. We will be partnering with North County Sister Colleges and High Schools for a community cleanup in honor of Cesar Chavez. We look forward to working with students and community members to celebrate his legacy of service and social justice, and we will bring more information about this event as we get closer to the date. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Okay, can the council meet me up front? That includes you, deputy mayor. Bring the Kleenex, I think there's a box down there.
Okay. I have something to say to you.
Oh, yeah. You could say it after. Yeah. We're gonna be done after a couple of minutes. You don't get to stand there anymore. You get to come up here with me. Like, wait, where is she? Okay. I'm gonna hand this to you. Okay. Sharon has been, and by the way, so Sharon and I have worked together the whole 12 years that she's been on the city council, and it's been a real honor working with you and being my right-hand woman as the deputy mayor. It's really been great working with you, and I just, I want to say that before I start here. And if you need any tissue, it's right here. Sharon has been a San Marcos resident since 1971. She is an alumni of San Marcos High School and Palomar College, and holds a bachelor degree from San Diego State University in Business Administration with an emphasis in accounting furthering her education. She completed the Leadership North County Program, by the way, we actually worked together in that, at CSU San Marcos. Sharon has been an active volunteer in the community for more than 30 years, contributing to organizations such as the Girl Scouts, San Marcos Community Foundation, Boys and Girls Club, San Marcos Education Foundation, Valley of Discovery Education Foundation, Project Next, AYSO, San Marcos Girls Softball, Connected Through Kids, and various school-related parent and booster clubs. Sharon works as a broker-realtor and owns her own company. Sharon started her career, in her public career, in 1998 when she was elected to the governing board of San Marcos Unified School District. She led the district at an incredibly transformative time as the student population was exploding, and the school district transitioned from a small predominantly rural district to one of the largest in the county. And I do have a side note on this. If you don't all know, San Marcos Unified used to not have such a good reputation. That changed a lot under Sharon's leadership. So during Sharon's tenure, the district grew from eight to 17 schools, nearly doubled the student population, and was ranked one of the top academic school districts in the entire county. And there are 42 of the districts in this county. She was also actively involved in the successful passage of the 1996 Measure B campaign and the 2010 Prop K for Kids campaign, which secured funding for the maintenance and repairs to aging school infrastructure. And if you all know San Marcos High School, it changed from a very small high school that was old once when I was in high school up in Ramona, and now it looks like a college campus. Since being elected to the city council in 2012, Sharon has participated in the approval of 10 new park facilities, miles of new trails, and hundreds of housing units for new families. And a lot of that actually is affordable housing here in San Marcos as well. She represented San Marcos on North County Transit District, serving as vice chair of the Performance, Administration, and Finance Committee and the Executive Committee. Additionally, she chaired the North County Dispatch Joint Powers Authority and served as a representative to the Sandag Association governments as an alternate. During her 12 years on the city council, a few of her most notable accomplishments include the completion of the San Marcos Creek Infrastructure Project, approvals of many North County landmark buildings, and most recently, her volunteer efforts on the Guess on Q Committee, leading to the successful passage by over 60% of our community in support. We, the city council of the city of San Marcos, do hereby recognize you, Sharon, for your 12 years of service on the San Marcos City Council, and we wish you well in your future endeavors. And you're welcome. And I do hope that you have a few words to say.
I have.
Just a few?
Just a few.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not gonna be able to get through this. Heather, maybe you should read it. Okay, so I want to thank everybody who came here tonight. We are celebrating Measure Q. We are celebrating Danielle's election. We are celebrating Ed's reelection, and my last meeting after 12 years. Congratulations again to both Danielle and Ed. My comments will be short and sweet, so you can get over for some cupcakes. To those of you who played an important role in helping me to be the person and the public servant that I am today, I say thank you. Thankfully for all of you, I won't go into a long speech of successes and accomplishments because there have been many over the past 12 years, and they're not because of me. What I will say is much of what has been accomplished happens because of our staff, and we should be forever grateful to them. In closing, I leave you with a few thoughts. And some of you have heard these, and we've talked about these. But I say them in case, as a reminder, and for you to pay it forward. Do the right thing. Take the high road. Be honest. Be authentic. Be professional and respectful, and treat others how you would want to be treated. So I say thank you to all of you, and thank you for our many successes.
All right, we're almost done, and we can almost adjourn for cupcakes.
We need Sawyer.
Sawyer's here. Sawyer's in the back. He's here today. We have a new probationary employee. Sharon, we would like to present you with a token of our appreciation for your unwavering commitment to the city of San Marcos for the past 12 years. And the city of San Marcos staff would like to thank you for your unwavering commitment. You have been a wonderful cheerleader to the staff, always appreciating everything we do for you, and we're so appreciative, and we really wish you well as you transition to this new chapter.
Thank you very much.
Before we get our sweet tooth on, I want to take just a second, Sharon. You can't run away.
I'm not used to being up here.
I joined the Traffic Commission 10 years ago, spent four years there, two terms on the planning before I came to the council. But I knew early on, the best way to figure out what's going on is to find that thread of continuity. So while in those different commissions, I would come to all the council meetings. I think I have 10 years under my belt, missing just a few. But always watching Sharon, her calm demeanor, she does her homework, she brings out the points, she illustrates facts, she works hard, she does her research, and she serves her community well. And she has been that silent mentor for a lot of us. So I want to thank you very much, Sharon, and wish you well.
Thank you.
Our last picture together. You need to be a little closer.
Sure. Yeah, you should do it. All of them. Yes, without us.
Exactly.
Yes, without us. Yeah, you guys too. I can't believe how big Madison is. Madison, where's he? Did he come up?
No? Okay. Okay, that's fine.
One, two, three. I'll take a few. Then one for me. Thank you.
Nice.
I'm gonna keep it short. Come on up here, Sharon. Come back up here. I can't match what Randy said to us. I'm so grateful for that because he really captured, I think, you and the history. But what I will add is that that book of you really, I think, should say, you are truly a public servant. You are the example, and that book should say that because you are definitely one of a kind. And I have been so fortunate to be able to sit with you in this capacity and be able to see you at work. And you are such a force, Sharon. I don't know how your family handles that. And I had no idea when I ended up in this seat that I would have a front row seat too to see you in action. So what can I say? Thank you for being such a mentor, for being a friend, for being a colleague. And we are so fortunate that you chose San Marcos to be your home because we have all benefited in so many different ways. I've benefited from you before I even knew you existed. And I'm just so grateful that I've been able to work with you, work alongside you, and you've been such an influence on the work that we've all been doing on the ground, especially with our leads that represent our community. And it's been a true honor and a pleasure, and I'm grateful that you're gonna continue to be in our community and that we will have future collaboration. So thank you for your service, and thank you for putting us first.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
And I will really keep this short. Sharon, we've only had a chance to serve together up here for two years, but I've known you a lot longer than that, of course. And we all know the sacrifice and dedication it takes to put in 12-plus years in our community, and the sacrifice that your family has sacrificed for us as well. And it's just a truly, just fantastic career that you've had. Our community is better off today for you being part of it and you taking a leadership role, and our school district is as well, which I know firsthand, as you know. And I just want to say from the deepest part of my heart, thank you for everything that you've done for our community, and I wish you the best in your next chapter, whatever that might be.
So now, one last thing, and then we will go get cupcakes. So next is going to be our swearing-in oath of office. So we're gonna start with Councilmember Ed Musgrove for his reelection, so the rest of us will go sit down. And then after that, we will be having the oath of office for our newest council member, Ms. LeBlang. Mrs. LeBlang, I should say, Danielle. She's right there in the front with her family.
I love to embarrass my wife.
All right. Ed, if you want to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Edward Musgrove.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear.
That I will bear.
True faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you. Can we get one quick picture? Putting my other hat on. Thank you. Now invite Councilmember-elect Danielle for it. If your family wants to join you too, they can, or if they want to video, and then we All right, want to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Danielle LeBlang.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear.
That I will bear.
True faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. All right, one, two, three. Perfect, thank you. Danielle.
Danielle. Accepted speech? You might want to say a few. You might want to say a few things.
At the reception when she's at the desk.
Okay, all right, sorry. I thought I did it right after last time, so that's why I'm wondering.
But you can do both.
Don't worry. You don't have to do it now. You can think about it. It's okay.
I just want to say thank you to everyone in San Marcos for your support. This is such an honor. This city is absolutely incredible. This council is incredible. I have big shoes to fill. I absolutely do. And we have an amazing staff here. And I just could not be more thrilled and proud and honored to represent this city. So I cannot wait to build on our success and to stay on our positive path. I love our city. I love all of you. Thank you so much.
All right, now you can all join us in the Valley of Discovery room right next door for some refreshments.
We do have light refreshments in the room next door, so please feel free to join us next door for some light refreshments. Thank you.
Okay, welcome back everyone. We will, we are reconvening our meeting and our first order of business will be the roll call. Mr. Skolik.
All right, Councilmember LeBlanc.
Present.
Councilmember Musgrove?
Here.
Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Councilmember Sinella?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here.
Okay, so next order of business will be council commentary for our newly elected council members and that would be the reelection of Ed Musgrove. And then the election of Ms. Danielle LeBlang. It seems so weird calling her that. Councilmember LeBlang. Anyway, I, I for one, just would like to say congratulations to both of you. Very excited to move forward and all the wonderful things that we're going to continue in our city and all of the new things that we will be doing together. And anyway, anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, just Mayor, thank you. I'll echo your comments and just say congratulations to Danielle for your election. I know how much work it takes to go through that kind of campaign and, and you did all the hard work and it paid off. And I know you're going to be a great council member. And Councilmember Musgrove, it's been a pleasure serving with you for the last two years and we've accomplished a lot in a short period of time and I'm looking forward to what we'll accomplish going forward. So, congrats.
Councilmember Nunez?
Thank you Mayor. Congratulations, Councilmember LeBlanc, Danielle, on your, on your win and being here. I completely agree with you. I think you have really big, small shoes to fill. But I think this is a really exciting time in our city and we've done a lot of work, it's been said, but we have a lot of work to do and so I look forward to working with you. Councilmember Musgrove, congratulations on your reelection. Similarly, we've, we've accomplished a lot. We do have some challenges ahead, so I know we're going to face them and we're going to continue to do, do, do great work for, for our residents. So, congratulations.
Okay, Councilmember Musgrove and Councilmember LeBlang?
Thank you Mayor, and I want to thank the community and the residents of District Four for entrusting me with this great honor. It is an absolute privilege to serve. We do it because we care about our community, want to see it continue in the right direction. And I'm going to go off topic just for a second because getting to know our newest council member during the campaign season, since we're on the same election cycle, watching her absolutely tenaciously learning about what goes on in our city, asking questions. We had coffee a couple of days ago and it was question, 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 and she had it all in note form. Okay, Ed, here's the first one, I think. Okay, great. And I told her, and she says, "I hope I'm not going into things that, you know, are maybe fairly rudimentary for me." And I said, "No, every one of your questions are causing me to think they're not yes or no answers, because there really are no yes or no answers." It's a lot of, "How does this impact our community? Why do we do it? What are the ramifications collaterally, if it's a positive or a negative?" So, I, I know and I have faith in her that she's going to do a great job and I'm honored to serve with the rest of this council and our newest council member. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember LeBlang?
I know I made a few comments before the break and congratulations to Ed. I've really enjoyed getting to know them throughout the campaign. And we truly have an incredible council here and I could not be more honored to be on this council with every single one of them. And I have a lot to learn and we have a great staff and I have a lot of great support. And I look forward to making the best decisions for the city and making the city proud and Sharon Jenkins proud.
Okay, well then let's get on to our agenda. Our first order of business is our consent calendar. We have seven items. Do I have a motion to approve or any council members wish to pull any items?
Move to approve tonight's consent calendar.
A second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes? Seeing none. Moving on to oral communications and we have a couple of speakers. We have John Mosher followed by Jeff Poppin Deck and Tim Sheehan. Sorry, I do that every time. My apologies. It's harder than you guys would think. Welcome.
Thanks Mayor. Welcome Danielle. I was impressed by the way you handled your campaign and when you came and talked to us at the mobile home park, even though I had a small crowd and the other times I ran into you. Also, your sincerity about wanting to know what's happening with us seniors. And it's like this time of the year, the rest of the council is used to me coming here and talking about rent increases, which is something you're going to learn about really quick in, in our mobile home parks, because they're only allowed to raise it once a year. And for San Marcos Mobile Estates, our CPI number that they're going to base it off of comes out tomorrow. Last year I was lucky enough to have it come out today, the 10th, so I could come and talk about it. But I've already started negotiating what's going to happen. I'm trying to get them to give us a lower number when they actually submit it, so we don't go through the headaches again with a new management company. And we have somebody that we're working with. So, I will be taking you up on your offer to come out and talk to our people. I've let them know that you've already offered that and it'd be good to meet you. And also, I want to thank Mike for helping us with Semra. her, and she says, I hope I'm not going into things that, you know, are maybe fairly rudimentary for me. And I said, no, every one of your questions are causing me to think they're not yes or no answers, because there really are no yes or no answers. It's a lot of, how does this impact our community? Why do we do it? What are the ramifications collaterally, if it's a positive or a negative? So, I, I know and I have faith in her that she's going to do a great job, and I'm honored to serve with the rest of this council and our newest council member. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember LeBlang?
I know I made a few comments before the break, and congratulations to Ed. I've really enjoyed getting to know them throughout the campaign, and we truly have an incredible council here. And I could not be more honored to be on this council with every single one of them. And I have a lot to learn, and we have a great staff, and I have a lot of great support. And I look forward to making the best decisions for the city and making the city proud and Sharon Jenkins proud.
Okay, well then, let's get on to our agenda. Our first order of business is our consent calendar. We have seven items. Do I have a motion to approve, or any council members wish to pull any items?
Move to approve tonight's consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any knows? Seeing none. Moving on to oral communications, and we have a couple of speakers. We have John Mosher, followed by Jeff Poppendick, and Tim Sheehan. Sorry, I do that every time. My apologies. It's harder than you guys would think. Welcome.
Thanks, Mayor. Welcome, Danielle. I was impressed by the way you handled your campaign, and when you came and talked to us at the Mobile Home Park, even though I had a small crowd, and the other times I ran into you. Also, your sincerity about wanting to know what's happening with us seniors. And it's like, this time of the year, the rest of the councils used to be coming here and talking about rent increases, which is something you're going to learn about really quick in, in our Mobile Home Parks, because they're only allowed to raise it once a year. And for San Marcos Mobile Estates, our CPI number that they're going to, they're basing off of, comes out tomorrow. Last year, I was lucky enough to have it come out today, the 10th, so I could come and talk about it. But I've already started negotiating what's going to happen. I'm trying to get them to give us a lower number when they actually submit it, so we don't go through the headaches again with a new management company. And we have somebody that we're working with. So, I, I will be taking you up on your offer to come out and talk to our people. I've let them know that you've already offered that, and it'd be good to meet you. And also, I want to thank Mike for helping us with Semra. You guys impressed me all with the way you helped protect us and take care of our city. And it's nice to go out and advocate, when I talk to our residents or other Mobile Home Park people, to, to bring their spirits up and let them know it's worth coming here, it's worth being involved. And I hope I keep learning from what you guys are showing me and make a difference. Thanks.
Thank you. Jeff, it's, you're up. Welcome.
Hi, Jeff Poppendick. I'm on the HOA of Lakeview Mobile Estates, and I want to thank everybody here that voted for the 45-day moratorium to prevent Mobile Home Park owners from flipping senior parks to all-ages parks. When we all read about it at, at Lakeview, our hearts just leapt, because, you know, this has been something that's been heavy on our heads for a long, on our hearts for a long time. And I was reading this article in Coast News. They, they covered it pretty well, and it gave me kind of a laugh. I'll just read a little bit of it. "In October, the city attorney's office reached out to Lakeview for clarification regarding the intent and planned timeline. Dowell Law Offices, firm representing them, did not clarify and argue that the city had no jurisdiction in the matter and may not force the owners to provide older persons' housing." This is part I laughed. This is a quote. If it's wrong, it's a quote from Helen. If you can correct it. "We asked," Helen, "we asked them to clarify. They declined to do so in quite vehement terms, and they did not provide us with clarification as we requested." I kind of laughed at that, because I thought that Dowell only treated it me that way, because I wasn't an attorney. But I guess he does that with everybody. Anyway, a big weight off of our shoulders, and I hope that this gives us enough time to go forward with the senior Mobile Home Park overlay zone. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you. Next up is Tim Sheehan. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, and council, and new council member. I want to echo John's sentiments. Thank you for your service and sacrifice to our community. It means world to us. I'm Tim Sheehan. I'm president of San Marcos Mobile Home Residents Association. I've sort of been out of the loop. Some of you know that I inherited my childhood home in a small town in eastern Washington, so I've become a snowbird, and haven't been able to address you in person. But I want to thank you for adopting the moratorium to study this issue on creating the zoning overlay for 55 and older manufactured home communities. This is a sore subject with me that hits home personally, because my parents bought into the park where I live, and a year later, it was converted from 55 and older to all-age. So, I've seen over the, I saw firsthand over the course of time, how their quality of life in the community declined, because very few seniors will move into an all-age park community. And over the time, there's more and more kids playing in the streets or creating chaos in, in the common areas. And there's no requirement for adding parking or amenities for families when they're converted. So, we've seen other communities that have been converted. And a huge issue is the crime issue. We've seen kidnapping in my community, gang members in my community, and a whole host of challenges for seniors that, that creates a threat to their health and well-being. And I know several of you have visited our 55 and old, older communities and have a sense on the emotional investment that our seniors have in their community, and how special their social network of support is to enable them to age in place in their home and avoid needing to go to assisted living, because they have that supportive network in their community. And it's been a great way to downsize, sell their site-built home, and downsize to a retirement type of community, a safe and secure community. And that opens up their site-built home for their families. But to convert the 55 and older manufactured home communities to all-age without any requirements, we've seen the detriment that it's caused for the seniors. And it's no benefit for many of these families that, you know, have to park their vehicles outside the community, because there's a shortage of parking, and with the crime and other issues in these communities that are converted, that I hope that through this course of the moratorium, it will instill upon you that we need that zoning overlay to protect and preserve these 55 and older communities. Thank you.
Good, Tim. Next up is new business. First item, number eight, is Resolution 2024-9397 and 2024-9398, approving an updated part-time and full-time class classification, I always call it a class in comp study, and compensation schedule. Do we have any staff report on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to do a very brief presentation on the updates that we're going to propose for the classification and compensation schedule. The first item is the part-time class, the part-time classification schedule. This is to adjust the minimum wage adjustment that will take place on January 1, 2025. The state minimum wage will increase from $16 per hour to $16.50 per hour. This adjustment directly impacts entry-level positions in our compensation schedules. So, we're proposing a 3.13% increase to the schedule to ensure that we are meeting the minimum wage requirements. This adjustment at the part-time level has impacted full-time emergency medical technician pay. Aligning these changes, we're going to change the full-time wage for EMTs, increasing it from $16.49 an hour to $19 per hour. This adjustment aligns with our part-time EMT pay schedule in the regional market, maintaining competitiveness and supporting recruitment and retention efforts for this vital role in our fire department. And then the final item for this evening is we are adding a position to executive compensation. We are adjusting the Strategic Communications Director position and are creating a Director of Lean Government. This position is being proposed to address expanded citywide communication and operational needs. This role will focus on enhancing efficiency, accountability, and engagement through data-driven strategies and advanced communication methods. As required by Government Code Section 52.204-10, the salary range for this executive position is starting at $154,141 to $209,399 annually. It is classified at the existing and approved Grade IV on the full-time compensation schedule. In conclusion, these adjustments reflect the city's commitment to maintaining fair, competitive, and compliant compensation practices while supporting operational efficiency and excellence. I look forward to any questions or discussion on this item?
Okay, thank you very much, Michelle. Any questions from the council?
So, we're adjusting a line item that was existing and appropriated, but not filled with the communications directors. That sound accurate?
We had the communications director position on the schedule. We froze it as part of our budget cuts. So, it's not budgeted. It is budgeted, and the mid-year adjustment coming up. So, this will be one of the first positions that we unfreeze.
Definitely one we necessarily have to have. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I'll second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any knows? Seeing none. Motion passes unanimously. Next up is our appointments to Measure Q Citizens Oversight Committee, and we have, okay, these are, hold on. Oh, yep. Okay, so we have several applicants. We're going to stop, start out with Alexandra Cianes. And if I pronounced it wrong, please correct me, and I am open to comments and welcome. Thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Alexandra, and I have lived in San Marcos since 2012, while working as a registered nurse in a variety of healthcare settings, emergency rooms, ICUs, emergency transport, over the past 15 years. Most work, most recently working in the case management sector of population health. I love working with people, helping people, collaborating with people, and quality improvement. I have vast experience in healthcare, and I understand the financials of healthcare billing, as well as public safety. I think that the Measure Q Oversight Committee is a great asset, and is important to ensure our residents continue trust in our city, to spend their money as their vote intended. With my personal experience as a front-line worker, working alongside medics, building relationships with emergency transport teams of all disciplines, I understand the importance of ensuring that our firefighters and deputies, our first responders, have what they need to keep all of San Marcos citizens safe, including themselves. Thank you so much for your time and consideration for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the council? No? Seeing none. Moving on to Chris Freeman. Welcome, Chris.
Good evening. Honorable Mayor, council members, new council member LeBlanc, nice to meet you. I'm here tonight to ask for your appointments to the Measure Q Citizens Oversight Committee. As you all know, I've been a very vocal proponent for the outstanding benefits that Measure Q could bring to our city. Starting in late April, when City Council held its annual budget workshop up through Election Day, hardly a day went by when I wasn't working towards ensuring that Measure Q would pass. Whether it was maintaining the website for a safe and, safe and strong San Marcos, petitioning for endorsements, organizing volunteers for door-knocking, sign-waving, or educating residents through social media, I fought hard for this cause. I was just one of many, and for everyone that was mentioned earlier tonight, there were also many behind-the-scenes, present company included, that were also out there educating and spreading the word. I fought hard for Measure Q, because I knew deep down it was the right thing to do and the best path forward for our city. I did it to ensure residents have the absolute best quality of life. I did it for our city's staff, so that San Marcos would be an employer of choice and a place that high-quality employees would want to work at. And finally, I did it for my four littles at home, to set an example for them of when to get involved when the opportunity arises. In the end, we were able to see Measure Q pass with over 60% of the vote, but we didn't get them all. There were 15,977 people that voted no on Measure Q. We owe it to those voters and to all residents to ensure that these funds are spent appropriately, accounted for accurately, and communicated to the public effectively. I have a firm understanding of what this committee is and what it isn't. This is not an advisory committee, in the sense that the group chosen will have any more say than you or I into how these funds are spent. Those conversations are held in a public setting here, where all residents can weigh in on the future priorities for our city. What this group will be responsible for and must be qualified and capable of is renewing, reviewing city financial statements, overseeing the audit process, and ensuring that all reporting requirements are met. My education, experience, and involvement up to this point make me a good candidate for this position. As the five of you are very well aware, it's very fulfilling when you find the right opportunity to use your skills, knowledge, and passion for a local cause. I see this committee as a natural progression for me to continue to help make San Marcos a great place to work and live in. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris, and thank you for your support and all the hard work on Measure Q. We appreciate it. Okay, moving on to our next speaker, Christopher Carroll. withdrew his name, so he is not an applicant any longer. We have Christopher Waskiewicz.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Chris Waskiewicz. Very few people pronounce it right the first time, so no problem.
I tried hard.
You actually did a very, we met at a dinner last June, and you got some practice at them. And as a resident of District Four, Councilmember Musgrove, congratulations on your win. Me and my wife voted for you, so it's exciting to see you there. I've been a resident of San Marcos for only a year and a half. My wife and I moved to Santa Fe Hills in April of last year. But I have been a resident of San Diego County since 2011. I'm from Southern Virginia. I don't have much experience at the city government level. I'm an engineer by trade. I was actually an engineer on the Artemis program back before it was named Artemis. That's when it flew around the moon. That was a very exciting opportunity for my career. And here locally, I work for a company that we do consulting, mostly at the federal level. So, most of my career over 20 years has been working at the federal government and DOD level. So, tremendous experience with a number of audits and different types of actions with that. I'll be very forthright. I was going to be one of the citizens of San Marcos that did not vote for Measure Q when first looking at it. I think the comment was made, and any time a new tax is brought up, there's a number of different types of potential criticisms or taking a look at that. My wife and I reviewed it very extensively. We both did vote yes on it after taking a look at that and seeing the number of different resources. And I do agree, the campaign was very positive, and that was, just as a citizen, that was like a really nice takeaway to see that. However, when I saw that it did come with a committee, my one reservation with that was the law or measure didn't prescribe how the funds are being used, which just leads to a bit of hesitation when you do vote for that. And then, after I met the mayor at a CSTEM dinner at Cal State San Marcos, I serve on the CSTEM Advisory Council for Cal State San Marcos as an industry representative, helping build their new, not only their new building, but their curriculum that they have there. I was just inspired to continue checking the, the San Marcos local website to see opportunities, and the Measure Q committee came up to be able to do that. So, I hope I bring maybe a different type of outside voice, not as familiar with city government, but I've been a very proud member of the San Marcos community. Me and my wife are actually going to welcome the newest San Marcos resident in July. We just found out that news not too long ago, so we're very excited about that. And I really look forward to bringing a, a perspective that might be a bit helpful and constructive with that. Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. So, Erin Kaminsky, is she here this evening? I don't, I don't think so. Okay. And then Gary Greving cannot make it this evening. Hamant Padmas is up next, and then followed by him will be Janice Miller.
So, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak here. The reason I'm here is because I saw the commission invitation, and I thought I'd, thought I'd bring my experience to the benefit of the city. In terms of my experience, I was a resident of Vista from 2007 to 2011. And then I moved overseas for about five years, and then I came back and settled here into San Marcos in 2016. A little bit about myself, I know Measure Q is about public safety and infrastructure. I was a volunteer firefighter in New York when I lived there during, especially during 9/11. So, I do bring some experience on that perspective of, hey, what is required for safety and readiness. In terms of infrastructure, as I said, I moved out of the city of Vista, and I moved overseas to start a new career in infrastructure. I've worked in infrastructure for the past 13 years. My first role was to essentially move over to a country in West Africa called Gabon. My job there was to build up a government agency to manage infrastructure for the country. The first thing I did was set up the processes and systems, and I was trained as an auditor for auditing financial systems. In regard to the needs of Measure Q, the commission, it says you want someone who has an accounting, finance, engineering, construction background. I fill all of those. In terms of accounting, I set up a accounting system to manage over 700 billion, $700 million of, of capital expenditure for the nation of Gabon. I also did that for LAX as well. Terms of finance, I'm very familiar with capital expenditures, getting financing from foreign governments and using that. And currently, I'm working on engineering and construction projects here across the state of California, building EV infrastructure projects that are small-dollar, and also we have experience in mega, in mega construction projects as well. The other measure, it said, if you own a nonprofit, I do, I own a nonprofit here in, in San Marcos. It's a, it's called Away Zero Corporation, and we're all, we're advocating for getting plastic usage reduced. In terms of auditing, as I mentioned, I was trained as an auditor for some of these financial systems, and one of the things I bring is an understanding of the value of audits. When I first started my career, an auditor once told me, you know, auditors are thought of, hey, as these bad guys who come in at the end of a project and give you a problem. But really, auditors, if you bring them up front, they are your friends, because they will help you and so forth. So, I'm pleased to bring my experience and looking forward to helping where I can.
Thank you. Next up is Janice Miller, followed Next up is Janice Miller, followed by Justin Matsushita, and then Marla Tressel Will Trail.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, council members, city staff, and fellow community members. I'm honored to stand before you today as an appointee to the Measure Q Citizens Oversight Committee. I want to express my gratitude for this opportunity to serve our community and ensure that the goals of Measure Q are upheld with transparency, accountability, and a clear focus on our collective future. Measure Q was passed with the trust and confidence of the residents of San Marcos. As a committee, our role is to be stewards of the public trust, examining how these funds are allocated to enhance our infrastructure, public services, and other critical areas that support the well-being of our city. In my professional career in financial services, I have gained valuable experience in oversight, strategic planning, auditing, vendor management, third-party risk, continuity planning, accounting, and corporate real estate. These skills equip me to approach this role with diligence, integrity, and a comprehensive understanding of fiscal responsibility. I am dedicated to ensuring that our processes are transparent, our reports thorough, and that we provide clear communication to the public regarding the outcomes of our work. Additionally, I am passionate about community engagement, particularly in the area of financial literacy for our youth. I currently serve as the PTO Vice President and School Site Council Member for Joliet Leach Tag Elementary, having previously served as PTO President during the 22-23 school year. These roles have deepened my commitment to creating opportunities for future generations and have shown me the value of collaboration between community members and local institutions. Lastly, a quick overview of myself. I was born and raised in Los Angeles, California, and from a young age, I've always dreamed of living in San Diego and raising a family here. In April 2020, we found our forever home in San Marcos, just in time, given how real estate prices have skyrocketed since then. I live here with my husband, an Iraq veteran, and our two children, our daughter, who is about to turn nine in a few days, and our son, who recently turned six. We love being part of this community. I currently lead the Community Improvement Committee for our HOA. One of my proudest contributions have been organizing and leading our annual Fall Festival for the past three years, bringing residents together for food fun and a chance to connect with one another. In closing, I want to thank you once again for this opportunity to serve. I'm excited to contribute to the success of Measure Q and to work towards a future where our city continues to thrive with investments that benefit every resident. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Next up is Justin Matsushita, followed by Marla Tressel, and then Shoshana Aguilar will be after that.
Hi. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Justin Matsushita. I currently live in District 2. I want to thank you first and foremost for your courage in bringing this tax measure forward. As Councilman Musgrove stated, not every city was successful, and not every council took the posture that you took. And I applaud you, I really do, because you did put your necks out there. Politics is not easy, governance is not easy. But I thank you for the approach that you took in getting this measure to the finish line. I'm here tonight to talk about my interest in the Oversight Committee. I'll tell you a little bit about myself. I currently serve as a fire chief for another city in the county of San Diego. I've dedicated my entire adult life to public service. I also work as an adjunct professor at a community college in San Diego. And prior to working as a firefighter, I was a substitute teacher. I was a volunteer firefighter. I was an EMT. And most importantly, I worked at Fish House Veracruz right down the street and came home every single night smelling like cooked fish. From an academic standpoint, I have my doctorate in emergency management, a master's degree in public administration from San Diego State University, and a biology degree in physiology and neuroscience from University of California, San Diego. But that is not what qualifies me to be on this committee. What qualifies me to be on this committee is my lifelong commitment to this city. I love this city. I grew up in this city. I live in District 2. Prior to that, I lived in District 3. Prior to that, I grew up in my dad's home in District 1. And prior to that, I grew up in my grandparents' home, who raised me because my father was a single father, in District 4. So I have the unique experience of living in every single district in this city. I was not... I did not come from a family of privilege or means. My grandparents were interned during World War II, and they decided after they got out of their internment camp from Post in Arizona to make their home here in California, particularly here in San Marcos. This is where my dad went to high school. This is where I went to high school. This is where my sons went to high school. At that San Marcos High School that Councilwoman Jenkins talked about, needed some renovations back then. I also have a unique experience working at the executive level of city governance. As a fire chief, you are a member of the executive team, and you're faced with some very complex challenges. I have a unique combination of breadth and depth of living in this city. I remember smelling cow manure every day of my life, waking up and going to school, and I look forward to the opportunity to give back to this community.
Thank you, Justin. Next up, Marla Tressel, followed by Shoshana Aguilar, and then Sonya Olson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and esteemed council members. Thank you for this opportunity. I'd first like to mention that I would point out that there should be an update to my qualifications. I just received notice from the California Board of Accountancy that I passed yet another section of CPA exam, so three out of four are done. Taxes are a fact of life necessary for the proper functioning of government. However, most tax increases are met with skepticism. And this skepticism can be mitigated with transparency and accountability, the hallmarks of responsible governance. And in the case of Measure Q, the council chose wisely to create an Oversight Committee for these expenditures. If appointed to be a member of this committee, I believe I bring accounting and financial expertise, complemented by educational accomplishments, that will assist the council in its execution of the planned expenditures for the receipts. The estimated $22 million in annual receipts from Measure Q will help alleviate pressure on the city's reserve requirements. These funds will also help the city maintain the public safety, parks and recreation, and community facilities that we've all come to love and enjoy in this city. With direct experience in conducting open public meetings for various municipal tax measures, I can assist the council in delivering the message that the city will be made better off with the implementation of Measure Q. With relevant experience, I have served as an appointee on two financial advisory committees in two municipalities. One, the city of Rancho Palos Verdes in California, and the second, Howell Township, New Jersey. In this capacity, I conducted open public meetings to increase awareness of various other tax measures: utility user taxes, waste recycling programs, and increased cartage fees. Other expenditure reviews included developing new policies for the city's false alarm costs and residential chargebacks. Also conducted fixed asset reviews to increase efficiencies and reduce related expenditures. And in the course of my CPA exam studies, I have developed a familiarity with Gatsby. Public sector experience includes division controller, excellent working knowledge of GAAP, preparation of periodic financial statements, approval of capital expenditures, facility consolidations, and inventory optimization, and Sarbanes-Oxley reviews and internal audits that I have led. And then my industry line experience is in banking, manufacturing, hospitality, oil and gas, and hospitality. I would like to continue to contribute to this city in a meaningful way so we can all continue to enjoy a wonderful quality of life here in the city of San Marcos. Thank you.
Marla. Next up is Shoshana Aguilar, followed by Tracy Rich, because I do not believe that Sonya Olson is here this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council. You got my name right. My name is Shoshana Aguilar. I am a 10-year resident and homeowner of San Marcos in District 4, and I live there with my husband and two kids. We are frequent users of the many wonderful playgrounds in San Marcos. But more importantly to this committee, I hold a Master's of Public Administration degree. And for the past seven years, I have been managing municipal budgets for our neighboring cities of Oceanside and Carlsbad. So I manage about $80 million a year in utilities funds. I also am a certified internal auditor and have worked as an auditor for the city of San Diego. I understand that council is really where the decisions will be made on how to spend the Measure Q funds. And so I really see the Oversight Committee as one of financial oversight and as one to help the city comply with California state law. I would be honored to serve on the committee, and I think that my professional qualifications and education would be well-used there and a great way for me to give back to my community. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Next up is Tracy Rich, followed by... Sonya's not here this evening. I don't see her. Followed by Tim Ruggello.
Thank you, Mayor Jones, and the council members and staff. Everybody has all these prepared comments. I just got the email today, so sorry, I don't have anything prepared. But I did notice this is where all the volunteers are. I was always wondering. I work for a youth sports organization, and volunteers are harder and harder to find. But now I know where to come look. I thought I'd just... Everybody has the applications. I thought I'd just do a little bit about myself. I grew up... I'm a San Diego native, grew up in Miramesa, moved to San Marcos in 1999 after getting married. And we're so happy that we did. This is a great city to call our home, and we've been here since 1999, 25 years. I have two daughters, 22 and 19. Both went to Nob Hill, Woodland Park, and Mission Hills High School. Oldest daughter just graduated from UCLA. youngest daughter is currently at UC Santa Barbara. Testament to their hard work, but also testament to our great schools here in San Marcos who helped them prepare. I've been a volunteer in the youth sports environment probably since 2005. Started as a volunteer coach for my daughters, and I'm currently on the Board of Directors for the CDSC San Marcos, which is a local youth soccer club. Professionally, I am a structural engineer. Went to UC San Diego, have a bachelor's and master's degree in structural engineering. I feel that my engineering background provides me with the ability to manage budgets in construction projects. My volunteerism in the soccer program and the Board of Directors, I have to prepare budgets for the competitive side of our program. And I'm just... This will be my first time doing a civic volunteerism, so I'm super excited about that. I'm really excited for the opportunity if I'm chosen. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Tim Ruggello.
Evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Tim Ruggello. I applied to your Measure Q, and I'm present based on the encouragement from an email from your deputy city clerk yesterday to make a presentation. The reason I applied for this is because I'm licensed as a professional civil engineer, licensed landscaper, and real estate broker. So in addition to that, I have significant experience at the municipal, at private county, and currently as a federal employee on Camp Pendleton as a civil engineer. And to say... It would be an understatement. I'm familiar with the infrastructure at the city of San Marcos. So I think that would be as an asset. And the two most important things I can think of with regards to Measure Q would be obviously your capital improvement infrastructure. And that would be, obviously, I would have my bias, what I think needs improvements. But obviously, it would be dictated by what council and staff recommend. And also, as I put on my application, I think it would be prudent, since the Measure Q has a limited tenure, I think it would be prudent to see if some of that money, if it's allowed by how it's written, to develop any underdeveloped or undeveloped parcels of land that's owned by the city, that when, once they're developed, would generate income to eventually hopefully supplement and replace Measure Q as it times out. Anyway, thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Tim. Okay. And I did want to mention that we have a... For anyone that's not selected this evening, we do have appointments to many other committees in January, and Friday is the deadline. So if you have already filled out your application and you're not selected this evening, we do have more opportunities, because we love when people volunteer. So my motion would be, because I think all three of these folks have different, very unique qualifications that would help with the committee. So my motion would be for Chris Freeman, Justin Matsushita, and Marla Tressel. And that's my motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any noes? Seeing none.
Mayor, if I can just...
Yes.
If I can just piggyback on what you said, because I was just so impressed with the group of applicants. Not only with the qualifications and how well-spoken you were and your backgrounds and your skill sets, but I saw so many new faces tonight that I haven't seen before. I haven't met you. And I really would love to have all of you participate in the city on a commission, on a board. So if you have that drive and that calling, please go to the website and see if there's an area that you have interest in, because we need more people like you in contributing to our community. And you have so much to give, and you're just so impressive. So thanks for applying.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Thank you, Maria. Listening to everybody speak and looking at the background as I was doing, following along with when the applicants were coming up, these positions really require varied backgrounds. And there wasn't anybody that came up here tonight that is not qualified to do this. Eyes and ears of the community, level of expertise, work experience, drive, desire. Everybody has it. The mayor made her recommendations, and looking at the rest of the names, you would say, well, you could have named any three of them, and you can't discount anyone else. So I would just piggyback on what Councilmember Sanelo said, that if you do have that within you to commit to some minor time, but to benefit our community, we will have openings coming up. They're on our website. And I noticed on some of your applications, you did put a second and third option on there, and those will be considered. And we appreciate very much coming down here and offering your services to us. Thank you.
Okay, and I did forget about the whole short term and then two long terms. So my motion would be for Marla Tressel to be the short term, and then Justin and Chris to be the two long terms. And you can reapply if you... At the end of your short term or your long term.
What are the terms, Mayor?
So there is... The short term is expiring June 30, 2027, and then the two regular terms would be June 30, 2028.
So the better part of two years plus, and then three for the...
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Fantastic, thank you.
So just... We should revote, because I'm sure... Yes. I'm looking down at Mrs. Peake. She likes to keep us online. So anyway, my... Again, my motion would be for the short term for Marla Tressel, and then the two long term for Justin Matsushita and Chris Freeman. And do I have a second on that?
Before we vote, I'd also like to make a comment, Mayor, if I may.
Yes, go right ahead.
I also want to just state how welcoming it is to see this type of response, right, for this type of committee. I'm also just... I'm very proud of the quality of applicants that we're receiving. It is very impressive. I think we had a short time, right, for individuals to respond to the call, and I'm impressed with what we've received. And I'm really... If you didn't hear your name today, I hope you do consider applying for one of the other boards and commissions. So I'm hoping that we see some of these same names come January when we do our other appointments. And one point of clarification for staff, because I did note in some of these applicants, we do have individuals that have identified a second or third option. And so are we going to ask these individuals to reapply?
If they submitted on their application multiple...
If they submitted on their application multiple commissions, interest in multiple commissions, we will carry their application to the other open committees and commissions and boards in January.
Thank you for that clarification. I really do hope that you, you've included or you submit an application or ask for your name to be considered for the other appointments. So thank you for being here and thank you for taking the time to serve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any noes? Seeing none? If I could just direct staff, all of, everyone that applied this evening that was not selected, please let shoot them off an email and then if you could just respond with a, because they might, they might have said, oh, I maybe want to add something else to my list of the, the different commissions that you might want to be involved with. If we could just make sure that we send that out to them and then Friday is the deadline, so please make sure you respond. So if we could send that out first thing tomorrow morning to all the applicants.
Yeah, it's a week from this Friday.
Oh, a week from this Friday. Okay, I had my dates, my dates confused. All right, awesome. Thank you very much. Okay, so be expecting an email if you haven't already been selected this evening. Okay. Moving on to more oral communications. Do we have any other speaker slips? Seeing none? My iPad is on the fritz, but I think I can remember the, what happened at Sandag last Friday. We have another meeting this Friday. But the biggest discussion that happened was the update on the connection to the airport. And so we have three different options. One would be a, a trolley and one would be a bus system and then one would be the people mover. As everyone probably knows, Measure G did not pass in the county. And so therefore there is a funding shortage because the people mover is, I want to say it's from two to four billion dollars. It's very expensive. A lot of infrastructure, the least expensive mode would honestly be the, the buses and that's actually the quickest one that we could actually implement. So we will probably end up doing that. We're going to be presented with some more discussion, more options on that. But that will be, I think in a couple of months. You were there too. I'm not, I don't, I don't think they gave us a date on that when they were, yeah. So anyway, but that'll be coming back. So anyway, we will be having more conversation on that in the future, but that's pretty much it. Do you recall anything else that, off the top of your head?
Not specific to that, Mayor, but if I could
Sure, go ahead.
tangentially related to that, in the transportation planning and budgeting, the upgrades to the line, the rail line in the Delmar area that is programmed in with the anticipation of funds and the ATP, that particular project did not make the governor's list for funding. So this could impact other transportation plans, including these issues as to where the monies that we have are going to be spent. So one more, I would think in the future, maybe at the next meeting.
Oh, and then, yes, and then twenty twenty-five, which is next year, gosh, it's right around the corner. We will be having the update to the trans, regional transportation plan coming forward. So moving on to League of California Cities, Councilmember Musgrove, that was today. Do you have any updates for us?
It was yesterday, Mayor.
I'm sorry, yesterday. I'm all confused with my days this week.
In full throttle, the reason why I did not make the business visit, which we will discuss shortly.
I wasn't going to say anything.
I'll follow my sword. We had, thank you very much to Councilmember Nunez also for presiding as our regional president. We had an update from Maurice Lyles, who represents Governor Newsom for Southern California with the CARE Act, which is Community Assistance, Recovery, and Empowerment. A lot of information, it got a little bit confusing. He did provide his information though for contact, so if staff or anyone wants to know a little bit more information, we can certainly get you that, that email or phone number. And we had some representatives from SDSU. They have a school of public affairs where they offer training for newly elected and current elected officials. I mean, it's something to consider, I suppose. I'm not sure if there's a cost involved. I would imagine there probably is. But we do not have another meeting until January. Is that correct? Okay, and that concludes that report.
I do want to, I do want to add, since it occurred last week, the league did host the leadership and I, a week ago, last week, the meeting was held in, or workshop was held in Napa. I wasn't able to make it. We did have San Diego County representation. And I just want to highlight that they did finalize the twenty twenty-five advocacy priorities. So the league is going to be focusing, I think we've seen variations of these the last, the last few years, but we are going to be focusing to protect local revenues and expand economic development tools, strengthen climate change resiliency and disaster preparedness, strengthen and modernize critical infrastructure, and to secure investments to prevent and reduce homelessness and increase the supply of affordable housing.
We have a cheat sheet right here. Those are all very, very important aspects of what we do. And the motivation from Sacramento to get these done is very encouraging too.
Yes. So we'll be following these closely.
So when they are talking about affordable housing, how, what are the initiatives that they're doing? I mean, if we think back to twenty twelve when redevelopment agencies were basically, I call it killed, but when they were eliminated and we had one of the largest redevelopment agencies in the state of California, I think it was in the top five. Did they indicate what those funding revenue or those funding sources would be to build affordable housing or no?
I think we're still trying to reconcile the deficit to the budget, but they have the model in place. They just don't have the money right now.
So and just to give everyone at home a glimpse into what that looks like, so I talked a little bit earlier about the tax increment. So out of every property tax dollar, there's a one percent. So out of that one percent, we actually received a larger share of that on the specific redevelopment areas. So there were two within our city. And that money actually went to build affordable housing and infrastructure for our lower income sort of areas where it needed redevelopment. So redevelopment in twenty twelve, it was May of two thousand and twelve, and I do remember because we had to write a twenty-four million dollar check to the state. I said, could we take that in penny rolls to the state and make them actually count it out? Because I was a little bit better. I still am. I will admit that. But, you know, losing that revenue was really a big hit to our city because we were able to do so much with that. I want to say in excess in District One alone, over a hundred and sixty million dollars. So a significant amount of actually infrastructure, housing, able to secure some of the money for the park. I think the Marcos Crossing used a little bit of that money, but a lot of really noticeable improvements in that part of our community, which now we don't have. So now we still continue to get the mandates, though we don't really have any way to pay for those, which is a little upsetting. So, you know, if there is a way, I honestly would love to see redevelopment come back the way that it was. I don't know that that will end up happening, but we still are paying that, or the state is still receiving that money. And yet we have yet to see not one penny of it. So anyway, if we could figure out how to get that back, that would be great. And then I did want to ask about the local revenue. What about local control? Did they talk about that at all? And this is something that we oftentimes talk about here up on the dais here, about we don't want the state to be in charge of our land use. So did you guys talk about that at all?
That, if you don't mind, Maria, that, that is one of the major tenants of the league and constantly pushing for that. But the pushback seems to come from Sacramento is, here's your local control, but this is how you have to do it. So it's that constant struggle of, give us the parameters and we will make it work in our community because we know what works best in our community. And we get back a cookie cutter answer, which is not really the greatest answer.
So recently I was having a conversation with the mayor of Solana Beach and she indicated that our neighborhood voices, which we took a stand on back, I want to say that was twenty twenty-one, the end of twenty twenty-one, for local land use, that that would be coming back hopefully, or actually on the ballot. They're going to go out for signatures in twenty twenty-six. So if you guys hear anything more about that up at the league, that would be good to know because we do need local land use. Because as we've got state density bonus, we have all of these different things coming forward, which takes away our local authority. It's very frustrating for us.
Councilmember LeBlanc will be at the next league meeting for new council members in January.
So you need to keep talking about local control because we talk about it a lot and we'll bring you up to speed on all of that. It is really complicated, but a lot of folks don't even know that if a development comes in and they want to use, or they want a higher density, they could actually go around the city and get that based on different laws that we don't even get to control. So it's very frustrating for us because we try to explain that to the residents of, gee, we have state law that actually goes around us. And they don't always hear that part of the conversation, but it is pretty frustrating for us. So we'll get you up to speed on that one.
And they are having a city council member academy at the end of January that I'll be attending. So I'm sure that will be one of the topics of all the different presentations I attend. So that should be really interesting. I'm excited about that one.
Yes, and the legislators, anytime we can talk to them, you bump into them at anything, make sure that they understand, we definitely want local control. Okay.
Can I, can I say, Mayor, because I think even though it's not listed specifically as a prior, as a priority, I do suspect that it will continue to be a topic of conversation for the league. It was this past year indirectly. And so I think this is something that we're going to be looking at. So maybe something to think of, think about. We are in the process of putting together our list of priorities here for the, for the county, for the division. So maybe this is something that we can look at shaping to see what we can bring forward or at least highlight. We do have, if you'll remember, we do have representation from San Diego County at the board level. We have Councilmember Teresa Costa in Carlsbad. That's the second vice president. We have Priya Bhat Patel that is also part of that leader. So we do have representation. We have Mayor Minto that represents us at the board. So I think we can look at, hopefully shaping something to, to look at it.
Yeah, because at the end of the day, it's so frustrating for us when we don't even, you know, when we, it's a ministerial sort of approval, we don't even get to weigh in on it. So I think as, you know, time goes on and we continue to have these conversations, having some, some say in what happens and us shaping law would be something I would totally be on board. And I can be a little bit persuasive, so anytime I can help out, let me know. I'm definitely happy to make phone calls and, and all of that. Because let's face it, we've been dealing with this for years and as a state is now really cracking down on cities and now opening up opportunities where they're talking about lawsuits, suing cities because they're not following the state law. And then also there, I know there have been a couple of cases at least where, I don't know if it's happened yet, but I think it's, there's at least been discussion of it where cities have said, no, we're not going to build, we're not going to allow this development. And then it ends up that their housing element gets opened up and we certainly don't want that because that's actually a bigger problem. So anyway, figuring out how to comply, how we can shape the law, we're, we're always working on that. So anyway, anything we can do on that would be great. Okay, moving on to North County Transit District and Deputy Mayor Jenkins is not with us anymore. I don't know if we, if they have a meeting this month. Do we know?
Mayor, I'm actually
You're the alternate, right?
I'm the alternate and I did receive, of course, very specific instructions from Sharon Jenkins on this. So the next meeting, it's next week, so I'm set to attend that meeting.
Perfect. All right.
We'll provide a report in January.
Perfect, yeah, January, perfect. Thank you so much. And then North County Dispatch, Councilmember Nunez.
Thank you, Mayor. So we did meet last, last week. And I hadn't realized that we were, we typically would have met at the end of, of November, but because it falls right before Thanksgiving, the meeting got postponed until last week. And we had a short meeting and so really to, to highlight from the meeting, we had employee recognitions. And the one that stood out for me is that we did recognize Division Manager Shauna Devine and it was for her fifteen years of service.
I was going to say, I remember her, actually.
I was going to say, it sounds, she's probably one of the longer-serving employees of the dispatch, so it was great to see that recognition. And the other item that, that really was the highlight is that we were presented with financials. And we are sound. The, the auditor's report was, was really shining. They did have some struggles. There's been some turnover in the, in the individual that was leading the financial effort. So that did, I think, cause a little bit of delay, but obviously they were able to pull together. And so they did present the financials timely and they were approved by the board. So we're in good shape. We also did get to elect the, the new chair. And it'll be Councilmember Robinson, former Chief Robinson from Oceanside, who was elected to be chair for the following year.
Perfect. Okay, all right. Clean Energy Alliance.
We meet next month.
Okay. City Council Business Visits. We had one. It was at a wellness, wellness chiropractic. That was on Monday, yesterday. There we are. It was a hot sunny day. It's run by a husband and wife team, Dr. Gary Lookwich and his wife Wendy. They work together and run that business. So get this, you guys, they've been in the same business for, or the same location for forty-one years, since nineteen eighty-three. Right there at Park and San Marcos Boulevard. And approximately eighty percent of his practice is devoted to personal injury cases and medical legal work. They rely on referrals to grow the business, having never advertised to attract new patients. They commit to empowering patients to become more self-reliant through home therapy, postural, and ergonomic corrections and rehabilitative exercises. They feature services that are like spinal manipulation, personal injury care, therapeutic exercise, wellness education, and nutrition and supplements guidance. And their business motto is, we listen, we care, and we help heal you naturally. There are some pictures of their office. They are right there by Mama Cat, so everyone knows where that is. And they're dedicated to serve the community with honesty and compassion. And if chiropractic care is not the best option, they'll let you know. They don't try to just make you a client if it's not right for you. So, and they really focus on patient well-being and high treatment success. And one of the things that isn't even in the notes or the pictures is, they're so old-school, they actually have paper forms. So they had this one area where it was all paper forms and it was in these little drawers and Dr. Gary was like, you know, I've been doing this, this way for a while and I think it's really the best way. I actually appreciate it because, me, I think I mentioned it earlier, I have no iPad. My iPad will not work for me. I can't get into it. So here we are and I have paper today, so I actually appreciate it. Sometimes it is better. I actually call technology both a blessing and a curse at the same time because you just never know what's going to end up happening. So anyway, it was an interesting visit and again, it's right there at Park. Wait, is that Park? I think it is Park, yeah. And San Marcos Boulevard, again, well, it's actually across from Better Buzz Coffee and then right by Mama Cat's in that same center. Anyway, that's it for the business visit and now we're moving on to council commentary. And so you got through your first meeting. What do you have to say, Danielle? And not to put you on the spot, but anyway, really excited to have you with us.
It was a great first meeting. I really enjoyed having the Measure Q committee appointments on the agenda. It's really great to see the passion. As I learned throughout the campaign, we have a very passionate city and I love seeing so many people applying for that role who are qualified. So please stay involved because we need people who love the city and who are passionate about it. So this was a great first meeting. Thank you for the warm So this was a great first meeting, thank you for the warm welcome, and can't wait for the next one in the next four years.
Awesome. Well, we are going to see you not back until next year. It is going to be Christmas, because tomorrow we had a special meeting, but we have ended up canceling that, so we will not be back until January. So Merry Christmas to everyone, Happy New Year, and we will see you back in 2025. With that, this meeting is adjourned.